Hello Tracy. Hello. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi Jeff.
Hello.
Katie. Hi Tracy.
How come I'm not visible? Let's see. There we go.
Mary, do we start at seven or 7:15?
Well, we're supposed to start at seven. That's the only time Zoom will let me put in.
Okay.
However, I don't think you have enough board members. Right?
Got three.
Yeah.
Lady make some phone calls.
I was gonna say, I'll send Kelly and Sherry a message.
Sorry, call Rachel. Hi, it's Frankie. Good, was Rachel going on the meeting tonight? Oh, the password, the last thing is a capital S. 7EK3G capital S. Yeah. Okay. I brought her home, she saw. Alright, thanks. Okay, thanks. Rachel's logging in.
Okay. Kelly's trying to log in also.
I had to update my Zoom thing, so it might take a couple minutes if they have to update it.
Is Karen gonna be? Oh, she is here, is here.
Katie, have you heard from Sherry?
She said she's on.
Okay, Rachel's on.
Could you do a roll call Frank, just so we make sure we have everybody?
Jeff, are you on?
Yes.
Katie is on. Hi Katie, say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Rachel, are you on?
I'm here.
Okay, you've got no video with Rachel.
No.
Yeah, video with me?
No.
You'll have to hit the join with video button.
Hey, I'm gonna try not to lose you.
Kelly's there.
Join with video.
Um.
I don't see a button.
There is Rachel.
There we are, okay.
Kelly, are you on?
Yes.
You have video, Kelly?
Yes.
Uh, it's not coming up.
Um.
Yes, she's here.
Oh, there you are.
Okay. I've just lost everybody but Frank. Let me see.
They'll get this, I'm sure.
Are you on a laptop?
Yeah, I'm on a laptop. I had Windows for everybody, now I've only got one window.
Top right-hand corner, you'll see it says grid view or speaker view. You wanna be on grid view. Should be at the very top of your screen on the right-hand corner. Could be, it could be somewhere else, but.
I'm looking.
Mine says gallery view. Yeah, that's what you wanna have.
And I've got nothing on the top. What's this thing? It's task view.
Hi there.
Try that. See, that didn't work.
Hi Sherry, are you on?
I am now. I had to join through my regular Gmail. I don't know why that is, but.
Ah.
Okay, so we have a quorum. Some of us don't have video. So I guess we might as well get started. Is everyone ready to get started, or do you wanna tweak your IT a little more?
I'm fine.
Okay, you're all fine? I've called the board meeting to order. We have six board members present. Stay seated and we pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
Perfect job. Uh, can I have a motion approved at February 25th meeting?
I didn't see those minutes on there.
I saw them on the thing, I didn't go, there's no attachment.
Okay, let me check that out.
Or did they approve the last month? I'm not sure. I'm just seeing on their action items. And there is no.
Lee, let's skip that, cuz I don't, obviously I don't have you in the right month.
Okay.
Sorry about that. It's fine, Mary.
I'm gonna have a comment real easy tonight. Would any of the administrators like to make a public comment? We haven't heard from our administrators, we'll hear a little bit later. Okay, I got the consent agenda items, treasuries for personal actions, claims audit, budget transfers, health service, lawnmower bid, transfer of monies to capital fund, award of the milk and ice cream contract, file tax, collector's report card. Does anyone wanna discuss any of those?
I just have a quick question on the lawn mowing bid.
I saw there was one bid.
Yeah, was that all that we had? It was one bid for all three facilities? No, I think there were three bids that came in. It's just that Berdick landscaping was the lowest.
Lowest.
Okay. I can forward what Thurl sent to Karen Kapasi and Dr. Young about it, to you. Okay. Zoe Berdick was the lowest bidder. Okay. Buildings. And I, just based on the numbers, I'm assuming that does not include if we need to mow the new fields ourselves eventually.
No.
No.
Okay.
Is there any other questions on any agenda items?
No.
Okay, if not, could I have a motion for Jay to approve all consent agenda items?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Sherry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
No, yes. I don't have a report tonight, the president's report, so I'm gonna move right off to the superintendent's report, Stephen.
Oh, we already threw everything else?
We're moving.
Oh my goodness. Okay, well, I would just like to congratulate all of the tenure recipients. I assume we got through that already, right?
Yes.
Cuz I don't have three screens available for me. So, congratulations to all the tenure recipients. Well deserved, well. They're all fantastic people that we have. And it's unusual to have nine in one year, and I didn't realize that there would be that many in one year. But I know the administrators can certainly attest to the fine quality of the candidates that we have. I could certainly attest to at least the majority of them. And certainly, the administrator that's receiving tenure tonight, which is Fred Hutchinson. He's been with us four years, it seems like forever, but he's done an outstanding job in his position. And again, well deserved for everyone. And it's a shame that we can't have a ceremony at this point, but maybe we could do something. Maybe we'll put all their names out on the sign outside. Tomorrow or Friday, just acknowledging that they've done a lot of hard work. And again, it's that marriage, I've said this before, it's tenure to the district, but it's also, you know, a relationship that builds over the next few years, hopefully for the next 20 or 30 years. So, again, I think if you looked at all of the reports, they, you know, glowing reports for all of them. And it's a very wide range of individuals, from music teacher to director of curriculum instruction, to special education. And congratulations to that. So, the only other thing I wanted to mention, I guess, is this whole idea of the last six weeks of learning. I'm truly impressed with what our students and teachers are doing online. And I mentioned this to Frank just, you know, a little earlier today. I had an opportunity to meet with my nieces and nephews last night. We went up there and had some pizza, socially distanced. Skylerville, their teachers, from what I learned, are not instructing kids. All they're doing is giving out packets. Kids are, students are filling those packets online, sending them back to the teachers. So there's no real online instruction taking place. The teachers have office hours. And if the kid doesn't understand something, all they have to do is contact the teacher. I was a little surprised. And this ranges from 11th grade down to 5th grade. So, kudos to our school district and to all our teachers and our administrators for doing the right thing in these real difficult times. So, we're doing a good job and we hope to continue with real learning, concept chamber. Not that it's not real learning, but in a classroom. We need to be back in the classroom and in the school buildings. I don't know how that's gonna happen, but that's what we need to do. The budget tonight, you'll see, is not very different than the April 21st budget. With the exception that we've been able to reduce, and I don't wanna go on because it's gonna be a presentation. We're gonna be able to reduce the tax levy from 2.57 down to 1.99. At least it's not in the 19.5 range that some of our colleagues have to put out with. So, we're in good shape in terms of overall budget. Of course, if we get a reduction in state aid after the fact, then we have started to plan what we have to do. So, that's basically all I have to say. Construction, maybe I'll just add one more word. It's going by very quickly. When I when I go through the building, you wouldn't know that it was a school building. Walls are down and it's just going very, very quickly and very pleased with the construction update. They sprayed the track yesterday and probably today with the red coating. Amazing how quickly that goes on. Now we finally have good weather and I think next week that they're hoping to do striping. So other than that, we're moving right ahead with the construction projects. And it will be a completely different, two buildings that will be different starting in September. We're on track to complete over the summer, maybe a little bit early for some of the areas. And then, of course, the transportation building won't really get completed until October, November, but that's moving well ahead of schedule as well. That's it for my report.
Thank you. Jeff, do you have any report tonight?
Other than, everything is still staying the same. I don't know what else to say. I hear lots of rumors, I read lots of things on educational sites, and they're all contradictory. So I have no idea what's happening.
Well, that's government for today. Anything Katie or Stephen on the facility? I think you touched the highlights on the facility. Do you have anything Katie to add?
No, not too much. I can't wait to see the track. I've been going down pretty much every night to see if they've sprayed it yet, so. Can't wait for it to go down.
It's nice.
Maybe tonight if we get out before, and it's still light out. I think there's a fence up around it. I'm not sure you're gonna see it.
But you have to be on the bleacher. You can go up on the bleacher and look.
Looks like there's like plastic around it.
It's really, in fact, that's where I held the interviews for the system, for the principal. Or maybe I didn't comment on that. Can I get back in and comment on that?
Sure.
Alright, so as far as the middle school, high school principal search is going, it's done, really, just about done. We just have to follow up with some references. We had over 30 candidates. I wanna thank Tracy and her group of people that got together, that she got together to do the search, to kind of whittle it down to five candidates for the district-wide committee. From 30, I think it was actually over 30, went down from 30 to 10 to 5 to 2. And the both candidates that were sent to me for interviews are both excellent. I'd be happy with either one of them. I wanna just touch base with some of their references and touch base with the committee again to just kinda see what the final feeling would be. But I think come July 1, we'll have a new principal in place, which is a little bit of a relief for, I'm sure for most of us, certainly for me. But again, great, great, great list of candidates that they worked on. And we're very fortunate to have, you know, a good pool of candidates. You know, if you ask me 10 years ago, or even five years ago, we'd get 30 applicants. You know, I'd say probably not. But I think our reputation as a district has certainly improved, and that might be, you know, part of the reason that we're getting such quality and qualified candidates as well. So, that's the update.
Dr. Young?
Yes.
Are the two finalists, do they have experience as a principal?
One has experience as a high school principal, the other has experience as assistant principal in a very well-respected school district.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Not. We're gonna move to administrative snap test. Berlin Elementary, Tracy?
Hello, everybody. As Dr. Young mentioned, last week was pretty busy with interviews and getting all of that organized and set up. But as he said, we've had some strong candidates. Last week, I also held all of the 504 meetings for our elementary students, so that was a very busy week. And I've had more virtual meetings than I care to. I'm good. And right now, we're really focusing on just trying to wrap up the school year. Doing the things that we would normally do, but everything is just taking that much longer cuz we really kinda have to rethink how we're doing it in a virtual sense. So trying to figure out class lists for next year, wrapping up the school year, just all of those things that come with closing out a school year. Multiple plans for our 5th graders in different ways that we can recognize them, depending on what we're allowed to do. So, that's really the focus right now, is trying to just wrap up this school year. And then, once that's over with, we'll flip the switch and start coming up with, I'm sure, multiple plans of how to approach next year.
Thank you. Middle school, high school, Kathy?
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see your faces. I'd like to start, as Dr. Young mentioned, with congratulations. Fred, congratulations. We're very happy for you. In addition, I was able to recommend Jessica Gould, Alisa Hammer Smith, Amanda O'Leary Hayes, and Josh Weaver. In three out of four of the cases, we've watched these young people come up through the ranks, some of them graduates. Some of them started their careers by substituting for us. It's just really refreshing to go out watching these four people get their tenure, so it's very nice. And of course, Fred. We've, I've been working a bit on the state ed process. You know, as you know, we continue to be identified as a district at the middle school level. What happened was because we didn't have 3 through 8 testing this spring, they sort of nullified this past year, which is a shame. It doesn't count because we did so many wonderful things this year. But they do count in our book. And we continue with the process. The plan template has been modified a bit. So, I've attended a couple of webinars in the last week, as have a few other people. We've had several meeting, virtual meetings, including staff members and parents. And we're moving forward with the plans for that for next year, hoping to do this work collaboratively so that the team can be there and ready to support the new principal moving forward with the task of developing or putting forward the plan and the details for next year. So, that's taking up quite a bit of time. As Tracy said, you know, we're really just trying to wait and find out what it is that we're able to do in terms of our traditional celebrations. We have plans A, B, C, D, E filed, but you know, we really just need to wait and find out what we'll be able to execute. And I think we wait until the very last minute and not rush to make a decision. We have a perfectly safe method of doing it in the field, at school, and appropriately socially distanced if we're allowed to do that. So, I think there are many options and I don't see us forfeiting graduation at all. And then, I just wanted to say how nice it was. I got a phone call this week from one of our Girl Scout families asking if the Girl Scouts could deliver cookies to transportation and to some of the food service helpers and food service staff. And they delivered those today. I'm sure that they were I'm sure that they were delighted to, to feel noticed and respected and, and acknowledged for all of the hard work that they've done. And it was just so nice that we got a phone call from somebody in the community looking to honor the work that they're doing. So on that positive note, thank you.
Thank you. We got one more report right in June, or is this your last one?
One more, Mr. Slack.
Perfect. We're looking forward to it. Correcting the instruction, Fred?
Hi. How's everybody feeling, first of all? Good? Alright, alright, so, so I, I'm gonna echo what everybody else said. I'm super proud of our staff. What we're doing values the education that we offer. I had a conversation with a parent, as we all have had, but I have one this week where, where they said to me, you know, they, they were deeply appreciative of the fact that this was not a pass fail scenario. Because even though it wasn't easy, it, it illustrated to the kids that, that what we do is important. And so I'm proud of that. Everybody's making dinner, so there's background. I'm having a meeting. Sorry about that. So, so it is, uh, it's been a really great experience working with the staff and the administration. I, I think that we have created more program, more opportunities for kids, and more creative ways to do instruction in the last six weeks than, than I've done in the last seven years. We, we started today talking about summer. We're not sure what that can look like yet, but we have a lot of ideas. We are always talking about fourth quarter. We want to reiterate that fourth quarter for nine through twelve or high school level courses does count. It's not a pass fail. We need to get that message out there. And, and I think the teachers are, you know, I've, I've said this a, a number of times. This is the tale, the tale of a thousand heroes. From Jeanette to Tammy Dunlop, Tammy Whitman, with what they're doing for food. Mary sort of keeping us all tied together, all the administrators and teachers, and you guys, the board members. You know, this is a lot to sustain and, and I'm really proud to be part of this team.
Thank you. I know Jeanette's on. Is there anything from transportation from Jeanette? Probably muted.
Muted, Jeanette.
Nothing? Okay. Going on to uh, business office.
I think Jeanette said, "Thank you for the cookies. Thin mints are her favorite." So business office, as you know, the, the governor, the gov, we were very happy today to actually hear the governor say that you cannot replace the in-classroom experience. So I'm very happy to hear that. But we, we are, you know, hanging on his every word. The last, not today, but on Friday, when he presented, the director of the Division of Budget said that, you know, something possibly will be coming out in May. Well, that's another week, so. Things could change. We don't know. You know, Dr. Young, we're going based on the best information that we have as far as, you know, coming and presenting this, this budget and, you know, trying to, trying to preserve everything that we already have in place, but also planning for this to be a long-term, you know, consequence as far as the budget goes. So I, at this point, it's the best that we can do. So we're looking forward to getting over the budget hump and going into our grants and everything that we're able to carry over into the summer and then into next year.
Okay, thank you. From the Thomas here, I'm gonna make a quick comment.
Frank, you forgot an admin. Sam.
Oh, Samantha, yes. People's services.
Hi.
Exceptional education.
It wasn't on my gallery here, that's why I missed it.
Oh, yeah, I'm off to the side. No, I really don't have anything to add that my fellow administrators haven't already said other than I just want to thank you for, you know, approving the tenure of the three staff members from the Special Education Department tonight. They're all three very, very strong professionals in their own way. Stephanie Scanlon, Courtney Hard, and Rachel Toplitsky. And they're really, really assets to our department. It was a very, very strong year and it was really an honor to write letters for all three of those people. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you. To interject something here, you know, the students may not be coming into the buildings, but the creativity and the amount of work has increased immensely. So I have to commend the entire administrative staff, the staff, the transportation staff and everyone for pulling things off. And my discussions with Stephen, we're a smaller district, but we're doing things that larger districts are not doing. And I, I think that's gonna show in the progress of students. We'll have our challenges. But I'd like to thank all the administrators and the staff for all the extra effort because this is a challenging time and it's prolonged, like Karen said. So we're on it together and it's working very well. Old business, budget development.
Frank, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I just had a quick question about the distance learning. Do teachers submit lesson plans to their administrators? So there is some, some accountability in that aspect?
There, we're not doing lesson plans. That, that's not something that was, that's within our contract for teachers. We can't, we don't, we can't request lesson plans unless there's an action, a tip or something. But I, I'm in contact with the department chairs on a regular basis. We meet weekly. Dr. Lane is meeting with teams, as is Tracy at the elementary school. So we're keeping up with all these things. It's a lot of discussion. We wouldn't be getting lesson plans in a regular year, in, in a regular circumstance. And I don't think that we could ask for them.
The only reason I, I asked that is I was just wondering what, you know, the accountability system is. You know, is, if, you know, some teachers go over the top and, and they're exceptional and other teachers are just submitting, "This is what your agenda is." You don't necessarily have to submit anything. The students don't have to submit anything. So I was just wondering what the accountability in that aspect is.
Again, a lot comes out of, out of discussions, but we are keeping accountable. We're, we're keeping the system accountable. So all the departments and, and all of the teams at the elementary level are gonna encapsulate a summary of, of what they taught. So we'll know what standards were taught, what skills are taught, what skills need work, and how to, you know, so we're better prepared for next year. So, so individually, it's a lot of discussion. In general, systemically, we are monitoring very, very closely to ensure that the educational expectations for kids are being carried out.
And, and do teachers have the expectation that they're supposed to video and do lessons that, that way? Or is just sending out a sheet that this is what you have to do and that's it? Is that?
The principals might be able to speak to this a little bit, but in general, at the secondary level, we have a schedule built.
I saw the schedule for the secondary level.
For live classrooms. And that goes all the way to offer Schoology and we did that because the technology capacity. But I, I think the principals could probably speak to what they know as well on that.
I do ask my teachers to submit their, their weekly plan to me so that I have a sense of what's being taught. I'm also a part of their Schoology pages. So at any point, I can join that class. I can log in. I can see what they're doing. So I do think that they are being held accountable. I mean, we've given them flexibility in terms of how they deliver their instruction, whether that be by creating a video, having kids watch a video, having kids use a particular program for their learning purposes or a variety of those things. I don't, Kathy, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I think one of the things that Tracy just said that's important is the flexibility. You know, we, we have people that are really thinking on their feet right now or in their chair. You know, it's taking a lot of work out of them. And Katie, because of your background, you know how much detail teachers generally put into lessons, et cetera. And this is taking it to a whole other level. So we have a good sense of what teachers are covering. It says my connection is unstable. So I, I'm just gonna keep it short. But it, I mean with each and every grade level team on a weekly basis and sometimes more than once a week. So I feel we have good input into what they're doing. And I agree with what Stephen said. I have grandchildren in two other districts not done anywhere else like it's being done by our staff.
Yeah, I have to say my son's teacher, I, I'm amazed every day of what she puts out. But I was just curious if all teachers are held to that level.
It's, it's, and again, all of those things. I think that we're approaching this as, as an administrative team. We know that this is an opportunity for us to learn should we have to know this really much, much more profound way for the fall. We're hoping we don't, but we're not sure. We are, as Kathy said earlier, we're, we got A, B, C plans, D, E, F plans. So right now, I think we did a conscious effort to try and respect the hard work, the dynamic. We led with a sense of empathy and compassion for the kids and didn't want to lose that compassion for kids and families without considering our own teachers and how challenging this is for them. I know that from working with, not all things are equal. We have had conversations with individual teachers about what we'd like to see while they improve through remote learning. But in general, it, it has been a, it's a really challenging experience. I live in Chad. I, you know, I, I think it's a great school district. I gotta be honest, I'm terribly disappointed with the secondary level in Chad when I compare it to what our teachers are doing. If we turn it accountability, we run too much, too heavy on accountability. We want the system to learn. We want to learn from the system. But if it's about, if it's about the grill and how hot the stove can get, effort retracts. And, and right now, I think we're getting an awful lot of effort. You know, and as Frank said earlier, there is a real sense that we're all in this together. That of course does not mean that every teacher is performing at exactly the same level. But I, I do think that everybody that we have had conversations with individually or collectively, really above and beyond. An example, Rachel Harrison and I were on a phone call with a parent and a student who's struggling. It was Saturday, it was Sunday night at nine PM. You know, Caroline and I called another student whose mother emailed me today to schedule counseling components and that happened at 5:40. So like those, those things are, are proof that we're doing a really, really good job. Are we doing this perfectly? Nobody is. Nothing about this is perfect. You know, but we're learning and, and they're working hard.
Thank you. It does, it does show it's, it's hard. It'll show next fall because I think the students will be ahead of their schedule. What we think they've lost, they probably have maintained in growth.
That's possible. That, that's one of our next challenges. How do we assess where the kids are for the fall?
Well, I think in the fall, you'll, you'll see the difference in, you know, like, I hate to say it, the social economic difference of some kids that just don't have access to the internet and they've lost three months of education because of that. But that's not the school district fault. That's just where we live.
We have had, I, I think every conversation we've had has, has been a conversation in one way or another about equity and how we provide one way.
And Katie, I think you'll be surprised. When, when kids return in the fall, it won't be that they didn't have access to learning. It will be they chose not to.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Okay, moving along. Budget development. Unless you have something to say, Stephen?
Well, I have the presentation for the budget development and I'll share the screen. We'll go through most of the slides. They're all the same, basically. It'll come down to a couple of slides and a couple of minor changes. So let me, let me try and get this, sharing my, my screen if I can, if I can do it. Host disabled participant screen sharing. So Mary, I think you have to allow me to share a screen.
Okay. Any idea how I do that? You didn't tell me that before you left.
I don't know. It's probably a button on the bottom or something.
Unless you changed it, the PDF presentation was emailed to Mary. Mary can share it.
I can? Uh, I don't know that I can. Hold on.
But I have mine in, in, in a PowerPoint. I don't know if I'd be able to control the slides. Not that it really matters. They all got it. They all got the presentation.
Everyone should have the presentation today.
We did get it. So can you just highlight the differences from the last presentation?
Yeah, alright. What I'll do is I'll just go through my, my, my own presentation. Okay, so going down to the additions to the budget for this year. As, as you know, we are, we put in a position for an administrator, assistant principal, athletic director slash dean of students. That's in the budget. We put in a grade ten and a grade eleven and twelve team leader at the high school. We put in for some instrument replacements at, I believe it was at the high school level. And I'm, I'd have to double check with Karen to see if we, we were gonna buy those this year or next year. I don't know. But we did put in a $20,000 line item for that. At the elementary school, we put in for a reading program, still in the budget. That would be a K five literacy component with training associated for teachers. We added stipends for an art club and a character education leader or leader stipend. And I believe we added one, one monitor position, part-time at the elementary school. In the area of exceptional education, we're putting in a special education TA, which is needed because of IEP requirements. We put in an extended summer, uh, school year, an eight, one, two class for the summer, which we had a conversation about today. It's got, it's, it can't be a physical classroom. It's gonna be a kind of a virtual online classroom, which has its issues, but I think we can work out the kinks for that. And we put in for TCIS coordinator stipends, also for exceptional education. So really, there, there aren't a lot of added extras in the budget this year, but, but those were the ones that we kept in going forward. So what does that mean in terms of tax levy and budget, bottom line? It basically means that we actually have a decrease in the budget for next year by about $134,000, less than 1%. So it is actually a, a decrease in the amount of money that we're gonna be spending. That in itself is, you know, kind of a, not a major issue because it's only, it's only $135,000. What, what we did add since April 21st is, remember the Federal Cares Act? We were gonna be getting about $143,000. In the original budget, we did not add that in. In the proposed budget tonight, we, we add, we're adding that in. So in, for state aid purposes, we're gonna, we are getting an increase of about $127,000 altogether. So that, when you add all that up, it leaves a projected tax levy increase of about $190,000, which is 1.99%, okay? So it's less than what the maximum is, which is 2.57, which is allowable. And it's in line, pretty much in line with most of the area school districts, except of course, Rensselaer City, which has a nineteen and a half percent increase. Everybody else is, you know, somewhere between, you know, point nine and let's say 3.5. So we're, we're, we're in line with regional, uh, increases. The thing that saved us, and Karen, you can chime in on, on this too, if you, if you, uh, need to. We had two atypical refunds this year. That amounted to about four, almost four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. One of those was substantial at three hundred, about three hundred and nine thousand, uh, from the, uh, the health trust. So for this year only, and only for this year. The miscellaneous revenues did increase substantially, which really helps us, uh, overall. So next year, that's not going to be, be available unless we get other refunds. So the, uh, we were gonna use appropriated fund balance and, and in fact, in April, it was, I think, five hundred and thirty-five thousand. We, we now are only going to use five hundred thousand in appropriated fund balance. Uh, so all said and done. Our budget is twenty-one million, eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars. That's what we're going out with, uh, with a 1.99% projected tax levy, uh, increase. The rest of the presentation, basically, you know, changes a few numbers here and there in terms of expenditures, salaries. Uh, those obviously didn't change. The benefits and salary, um, for personnel did not. I mean, it went up about 2.9%, but not, nothing different than the April twenty-first presentation. Just quickly go through the slides. So in summary, what the board. You know, should probably adopt tonight is the budget for twenty-one million, eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six forty-nine. With a tax levy increase of 1.99, which that 1.99 is a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And then what we need to do is. When the governor. Makes a decision. On whether or not we've seen a reduction in state aid, foundation aid. Then we have to go back to the drawing board and reduce. The state aid budget by that amount. Um, which might mean looking at, you know, the expenditures. Certainly before we reduce any staffing positions, we, we'd look at. Those items that are typically, um, you can find reductions in. For example, equipment, um, maybe some utilities, maybe, maybe some materials and supplies that, those kinds of things. So that's, that's where we're at. And, uh, you have all the summaries. You have some backup information that, that Karen provided, um, for line items, you know, line, line item titles. So that's, I think we're in pretty good shape at this point in time. Any, anybody need any questions answered?
Regarding that? Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Because we don't know what's going on in the state.
Yeah.
Is there a way, and I hate to say raise taxes, but. Are we biting ourselves or, you know, shooting ourselves in the foot by not getting the full tax amount? Because we don't know what's going to happen in the government. And if they cut 20%, which has been told. You know, that's a $2 million cut. So with the extra tax increase. And if they don't cut it, then we can say, no, we're only going to collect the 1.99%. But if they do cut it, I just don't want to put ourselves in a situation where we could have got more money for these, for programming, but we didn't ask for that.
Yeah. Good point. Usually, you know, you, you do want to go out at the maximum. But this, this year is unusual because of the balloting system. You know, we, we got to send ballots to, I believe about 4,000, you know, residents. And I think the number itself, you're not saving a lot between 2.57 and 1.99. Right, Karen? You're, you're saving fifty-six thousand, fifty-seven thousand dollars. Which we made up already with that, that one. That one check. So yeah, I mean, you could go out at, at, at max. But I think, you know, some districts that are, that are over the, um, two, like that 2.0. And I think, I think we're better off going out with a 1.99. And not worry about the fifty-six or fifty-seven thousand dollars that we could tax the people, but Karen is waving her hand.
Well, I, I just wanted to say that I agree. Also the fact that, you know, like we said, this might not, um, look good year over year. So we do want to stay as close to max as possible, but we also know that it is, um, because of those, you know, unprecedented, uh, refunds. Um, we, we do know that, that we're able to carry that fifty-six thousand. Because what, what we've already done is identified areas where we're. We're budgeting, we're planning on these expenses. However, they're not mandatory expense, expenses. So we already know within this budget where we can save some money before we do anything else, before we, you know, if, if that 20%, like you said. Before we do anything, we say, okay, within the budget, where do we know that, you know, we don't have to make these expenses? Or, or such as like, um, uh, gas and diesel. Right now it's really low. We didn't cut anything out of gas and diesel on purpose. Because we're so unsure of what the governor's going to do. But if the gas and diesel prices stay so low, then great. We know we've got a little something there to, to, you know, cover that, the shortfall of that fifty-six thousand.
I think it's better to get the budget approved. Because if the governor cuts the budget, it's going to be devastating. And the half a percent won't even put a debt in it.
I'm also concerned we might have trouble getting people to vote this year for it if we go too high. Because a lot of people don't have jobs at the moment. So I think that increases our chances.
Yeah, the uncertainty of that vote, Jeff, and how exactly, I mean, because, you know, we have those fears. Whether people are going to vote no, just because it's easier to vote this year. You don't have to travel all the way, you know, over to B E S. If you, you know, live in the furthest reaches of Steven town. So that, that uncertainty of the voting and how that's going to turn out, you're exactly right, Jeff. We're trying to appease everyone.
I don't think anyone's going to go away from the table liking everything here.
Okay, so I have some specific questions now. Legal, it looks like it almost doubled. I'm trying to find it. Is there a, an explanation why we would almost double the legal budget?
We've been over year over year and this year was exceptionally. Bad. And so typically we do a three-year average and that's why.
Paul, we've had many other legal. Items that we had to deal with, which were never budgeted for.
And additionally.
Those fees are substantial.
And additionally, we, we took out from the twenty-two.
One second. Mary, can you reconnect Kelly? She lost connection.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry about that.
When I have two computers, I can't pay attention at the same time.
That's fine.
So Katie, I was just saying that, uh, the, the special ed legal was in the past, uh, separated out. We only have one legal at this point also.
Okay.
So like, that was, I've, I've, correct me if I'm wrong, about 10,000 for special ed, which was added into the regular legal fees now. So it really, I guess it went up about 20,000 altogether. We usually budget around 30,000. I don't have the numbers in front of me. I'm, I'm thinking from memory. And I think, is it this year we're going up to 60?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five. All right. And, and also keep in mind that we have to anticipate any future. Items with, with lawsuits and that. But yeah, but that's the reason.
Okay, um, the contractual at the middle school, high school, that was another, you know, substantial percent increase. Is there?
That's the instruments. There was a request for, uh, instruments. If we can do it in this year's budget, we are. But again, if, uh, if we do it in this year's budget, that's another spot where we can, uh, find that savings. If we get cut.
So where is the increase for, um, the elementary school? Reading, yeah, what?
That's under the twenty. Fred, what's your code?
Oh, it's under curriculum instruction.
Yes. Is it twenty-ten?
My twenty-ten or is Kathy twenty-ten?
No, Kathy's twenty-one-ten.
Oh, yeah.
Well, all instructional is twenty-one-ten. Yeah, twenty-ten, Katie.
Twenty-ten, okay. And then I noticed on the buildings and grounds, there was a substantial decrease.
That was that allocation where we had to reallocate those reserves. So we, and, and we were going to use that money towards those items that we ended up putting into project two. So that's, that's what that reallocation was. It was put into, under the sixteen-twenty and it's now going away.
Okay. I think that's all. I had. That's all I had. Thank you.
Is there, does anyone else have any questions on the budget? If not, then could I have a motion for twenty-one million, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars, eight, eight hundred and ninety-seven, six forty-nine?
I'll make it.
Increase of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars approximately. Will the tax levy be at 1.99%?
I'll make it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who seconded? I didn't catch it.
Kelly.
Kelly did.
I think we did at the same time.
I think so.
There's no more questions? Sheri, how do you vote?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Did Jeff vote?
Yes.
Yes.
I did, yes.
Okay, great.
I hate these little windows.
A lot of us, we're doing a great job here, but it's still. Sitting not next to each other. We lose a lot of interaction. So we're like the students. We're learning. Is there any other business any board member would like to bring up? If not, it could be, um, I know graduation is, um, everything's to be determined. But Mary, if you could send, when you get notices of what's happening of important events, you could send it to the board. So the board members can get engaged and not overlook simple things. I know I've got a lot of board members that like to go to participate, whatever they could. We could just know about it.
Okay.
Frank?
Yes.
Something that's coming up and, um, it, it's through the character ed program at the high school. Uh, we're going to be doing an email campaign. I believe it went up on Facebook in the website today. You're welcome to, to participate in that if you'd like to. The email was, the place where you're going to send it is right on the flyer, so it doesn't even have to run through the school. Character Ed folks, just put that together, that's all.
Okay. Just make, I'm sorry, one, one last comment. You know, if we, and I hope it, it still holds, that we have these ceremonies, um, for our students. It will be limited to invitation kind of only. I don't want to say the board's not invited, but the fewer we have. I think the more likely it will be approved by the county. Health department or the state. So we, I think we, we, we chose two board members, correct me if I'm wrong. For the graduation at the high school. Right? Kathy, that's correct. Will, will, will we have two board members at least just be present? Although they won't be doing anything but their, their physical presence?
We hadn't, we, of course, probably will do that, but we need to make sure that that's acceptable. And we, in our ideal plan, we have it such that, um, no one would be touching the diploma. So there won't be a handoff of the diploma. It'll be more of a pickup. But yeah, I, we would love to have board members there. Again, it's a case of is that going to be able to happen?
Well, it's not so much as board members being present that, uh, they could either send an email or send a mail or send a card or make a phone call. I know people like to have, um, hands-on calls. Uh, little things mean a lot. So it's not. Per se attendance, because I know it's going to be limited. But other things that we could do to, um, I know calm parents down because parents are upset. They can't get their way of former. Ways and we're in a new world today.
Frank, I, I can just point out, and I participated, I, they did an adopt a senior, which isn't, you know, affiliated with the school, but, um. A lot of our, um, students were on there. So if you're on Facebook, take, you know, look that up, adopt a senior twenty-twenty, I think is what it was called. And you could, you know, I just searched Berlin and just picked a bunch of kids and adopted them. So it was, it was a cool little thing.
That's a little thing that means a lot probably to the students if they get a note.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. The next meeting will be Tuesday, June sixteenth. And it's still scheduled via Zoom, so. It is what it is. If there's nothing else for any of the board members, could I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion, Frank.
Your second?
I'll second it.
And thank everyone for what you're doing. Um, we're all in this together and I think we're doing a fantastic job and every day it's different and we're learning as we go.
Yeah.
Katie is still light out.
Now check the track out and send us a note.
J J. Finwell.
Okay.